Evening everyone and welcome to our November 21st, 2023 regular meeting of the Milani Malka Alani Neighborhood Board 35. I call this meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to ask Scout, TSA Troop 664 to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise for the presentation of the colors. Troop, attention. Color Guard, attention. Color Guard, forward march. Mark time, march. Left wheel, march. Ready, halt. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Scout salute. On my honor, I'll be to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Ready, two. Color Guard, board, march. Mark time, march. Left wheel, march. Ready, halt. Color Guard dismiss. Troop dismiss. Everybody please be seated.
Alright, thank you, Troop 664. Um, before we move on the agenda, I just want to remind everyone and I will do it at the end of the meeting as well. Uh, Neighborhood Board 35 will be in recess in December. So I want to wish everybody a safe and happy holiday season. We will be back in January on the 16th, 2024 for our meeting. So for those here as well as online, that's just a reminder for all of us. So we'll move on to uh our meeting agenda. Meeting decorum, Vice Chair Tomashiro.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, welcome everyone and on behalf of Chair Hazama and your members of your Milani Malka Alani Valley Neighborhood Board, again, we welcome all your comments, feedback, concerns, and definitely your ideas. We just asked for the meeting decorum. If uh you want to speak, to please raise your hand, be recognized by the chair and then he will signal you up to come up to the microphone in the front. For those that are joining us virtually, again, just signal uh through the computer uh that you wish to speak and same thing, be recognized by the chair and the chair will acknowledge uh when you should uh should speak. Uh, we also finally ask that you limit your comments so that we can hear from everyone to about three minutes or less if possible. Thank you very much. Uh, back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Moving on to our monthly report, Honolulu Fire Department, I believe you're online. Go ahead.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'm Dustin with the Milani Malka Fire Station. I'm gonna be going over incident statistics for October 2023 as well as some uh fire safety tips. So we'll start with the incident statistics. Uh, fires, we have structure zero, wildland brush, zero, nuisance, one, cooking, zero, activated alarms, one. Emergencies, medical, thirty-six, motor vehicle collision with pedestrians, zero, motor vehicle crash collision, four, mountain rescue, zero, ocean rescue, zero, hazardous materials incidents, zero. And then we'll go into fire safety tips. Holiday cooking safety, cooking, or keep everyone safe this holiday season. Thanksgiving is the peak day for home cooking fires with more than three times the daily average for such incidents. Christmas Day and Christmas Eve ranked second and third with both having nearly twice the daily average. Unattended cooking is by far the leading contributing factor in cooking fires and fire deaths. Uh, stay in the kitchen and focus on the food when you are cooking on the stove top. Stay in the home when cooking your turkey and check on it frequently. If you want a fried turkey, purchase it from a grocery store, restaurant, or buy a fryer that does not use oil. Turkey fryers that use cooking oil are not safe. These fryers use large amounts of oil at high temperatures, which can cause devastating burns. Consider purchasing an infrared fryer, air fryer, or electric turkey fryer that has been listed by a qualified testing laboratory. Do not leave fryers unattended when in use. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? So um these statistics were from the month of October?
Yes.
So the Malka Fire is not in your statistic yet, but can we ask you a question? Um, there an investigation that's going to be conducted into the cause of the fire?
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to my captain.
Yeah, hey, Captain Thornock, uh, Milani Malka Fire Station. Yeah, there is actually an ongoing investigation to try to identify the cause. Um, I know that's still in the process. Hasn't been identified. Um, when that information comes available, I'm sure the department will be providing it at multiple platforms um through the city to uh everybody. If if we haven't got that question answered for you by the next time we have a meeting, uh, we'll do our best to get that answer for you. Is there anything else we can help you with?
No, thank you, Captain. Any other questions? Nope. Alright, have a safe and happy holiday.
Okay, thanks, guys. You too.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, the Honolulu Police Department.
People, my name is Sergeant John Yipoka from San Pedro Royal Police Station. I'm one of um two Milani Sargent's on this block. Um, the crack tip of the month is the holiday season, so your uh beach is locked and secure, nothing valuable can happen, bang, so any conflict shorting. Still, it's not department in the beginning. Uh, all right. All ready and equipped.
Alright, any questions for the Honolulu Police Department this evening? Yeah, go ahead, Teresa.
Yes, yes. Aloha. Um, I'm over in Lohani Valley, Wekau Street. Um, we've been having some issues with the on-street parking when there's construction happening, each subdivision can get a parking permit for the street. Um, contacted them as well and there's only two of them, so they can't do too much. But in working with the officers over the last month to have them come out to ticket, um, I know it was really hard because people are moving the signs and things of that nature. Is is getting maybe like a copy of the permits something that would be useful to deliver? Because obviously, like I called and several other folks called, because I called because they were moved the sign so they were right at the edge of our driveway. And we're in the cul-de-sac at turn-on-point, so the buses were having a hard time. So the officer did come out and he called me and he's like, I'm so sorry, I ran out of tickets. That's how many cars were parked there. But I'm I'm wondering if that would be a tool that's useful, just it would just be too much craziness because the uh the permitting office, they didn't even have a permit for one of the one of the users. The contractor had for a small section for their parking of their their machines, but there was no street parking usage permit yet. There were street signs out. It's almost in that sense that what might be able to help, because they shared they don't have inspectors to go out and check. But I'm wondering if that might be a useful tool that we could do in our valley, provide that to your station. Yeah, so what happens is it's actually open according to the city permitting for street usage. Anyone can park there. You can't restrict it because it is a city street. So if there's a permit folder, they put all the park, you can park here. They cover all the no parking signs. You would hope that people had common sense and not park in front of the bus stops, but they parked right in front of all the bus stops. Um, so what happened was people were getting frustrated because they didn't want to walk far. So they moved the end parking of for parking and they put it all the way another fifty, they moved the sign. And so the contractor came and moved it back. But that's something that's a loose sign, but if you folks had something in 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 your back pocket or you knew which subdivision, you know, and they had their contact, it's like, hey, you're, but again, they don't know if that's their resident, right? Because that could be anybody. So like I said, it, I'm just wondering, and then if there is no permit, that would help when you guys could let the permitting department or there, I just trying to start the conversation where because there's no enforcement on their end. They refer to you folks. Yeah, it's common sense and it had the no parking sign.
Okay, any other questions for the Honolulu Police Department, anyone online? Thank you. Alright, Stacy. Next, Board of Water Supply. Yep. Happy holidays. Okay, Kathleen, before you get started, I want to congratulate and recognize you both. So Kathleen is the Honolulu uh county manager of the year for the City of Honolulu.
Thank you, Dean. They're very kind. I appreciate that. But it takes a whole team to do it and so I'm very blessed with an excellent team. So, okay. Um, let's see, a couple of things. We had a four-inch main break at nine five one zero zero five Kahaki Street. And then the next thing is our poster contest is getting launched for 2024. And for more information, please go to borderwatersupply.com backslash WCW contest. This year's theme is our water, our home. And you will, if you haven't already seen, we had a press conference this morning. Uh, we have filed a claim in federal courts, plain court, to preserve our rights to sue the Navy for $1.2 billion. So um we're hoping it never comes to that. We have, they have six months, five months now to be filed at the end of October to address our claim to either deny it or ignore it or say, yeah, you guys have a point and we need to sit down and talk, which is what we hoped. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Board of Water Supply this evening? The audience or online?
Okay. Have a great Thanksgiving and a wonderful Christmas. See you in the New Year.
Alright, thank you, Kathleen. Okay, our military representative, Colonel.
Uh, good evening, everybody, Chair, uh, Board members. Um, US Army, or sorry, Lieutenant Colonel Dan Anzlos, CO for 130th Engineer Brigade, uh, your military liaison. US Army Garrison Hawaii is holding its next hiring fair on November 28th, 2023 at Airport Honolulu Hotel, beginning at 8:30 a.m. and ending at 2 p.m. This is open to the public. This will be, this will be job officers, a job office, offers and provisional hiring the day of the job fair. Advanced applicants may go to www.himwr.com. Click on the employment banner to learn of openings and how to apply online. Walk-ins are welcome and should bring two references, proof of ID, social security card, resume or application. There are opportunities in business operations like golf, bowling, food service and many more. The Child Youth Services, or CYS, will be having openings to consider as well. For those who work in CYS, there are a variety of benefits such as retirement, access to all recreational facilities, discounted childcare, training and commissary PEC privileges. If you are interested in working with children, we have a position for you. Come on out, see what is available employment opportunities await. The US Army's Army 25th Combat Aviation Brigade provided air support to the Honolulu Fire Department with a UH-60 Blackhawk and a CH-47 Snug helicopter water bucket drops to help contain the Milani Mount Wild Light Wildland Fire over the course of five days from 30 October through 3 November. Personnel from our Army Fire Team also worked closely on site with the Incident Command to help direct water drops with our Army Aviation crews. Army efforts over the five days totaled more than ninety hours of flight time and more than 300 buckets of water drops, amounting to 350,000 gallons for Wildland Fire suppression efforts as of November 3rd. Other air assets for for the response included helicopters from the Army National Guard, the Division of Forestry and Wildlife and the Honolulu Fire Department. The 25th Infantry Division has recently completed the Joint Pacific Multinational Readiness Center Rotation Training across Hawaii. It is our effort and hope that this immensely important training exercise will provide our soldiers the needed skills to succeed in crisis or conflict and allow our service members to return safely home. As much as we understand how important the train, this training is, we also understand the great strain and stress our training may have caused you and your Ohana. We understand and more importantly appreciate your candid feedback regarding any disturbances we may have caused and made to your daily routines. We would also like to like you to know that your feedback throughout the exercise makes a difference and your voice is counted. We will look at all the community concerns from this year to determine, to examine potential adjustments for next year. We know we will always have some concerns from our communities. However, our goal is to minimize this while also training our brethren to improve readiness. Mahalo Nui for your support and sacrifice during these past two weeks. Your understanding and patience has helped us through this large-scale readiness exercise. The 25th Infantry Division is honored to work in Hawaii and remains committed to caring for the beautiful island where we live and serve. Um, this is a response from Ms. Brusso's office from last week, or last month. It was actually provided an email directly to me, but I want to make sure that we had shared it through this venue as well. Uh, this was in regards to um um Ms. Brusso's office received an inquiry from a constituent about the Mukalea and Army Beach located on the north shore and regards to a growing homeless population uh that was observed by the constituent. Uh, the US Army Garrison Hawaii routinely works with the Honolulu Police Department, achieves zero and Hawaii Department Transportation to regularly conduct homeless sweeps across various Army properties on Oahu. Mukalea Army Beach is included among these properties and the last sweep was completed on Wednesday, November 15. Our Director of Emergency Services conducts weekly engagements at Mukalea Army Beach to discourage homeless encampment and seeks to complete sweeps quarterly or sooner as needed depending upon personnel availability and HPD part participation. US Army Garrison Hawaii will continue to work with representatives of the state of Hawaii and the city of Honolulu to help mitigate this altogether. And then finally, this was a, an RFI from uh Ms. Teresa last uh month about uh Leilohua High School's upcoming centennial and how it corresponds to the establishment of Schofield Barracks. So in response to your RFI, um Sheena Cooper from the Army Liaison Officer for the Garrison has been in contact with 227 Infantry and the NCO Academy POCs uh to provide them uh information with the school itself, specifically the school's POC, Ms. Jenny Yamamoto, the school librarian. And what she had communicated that Principal Nakamoto of Leilohua High School confirmed the school will be celebrating this centennial next school year and are planning multiple events all throughout the school year. They will be inviting partners to participate and will share information as things are developed. So just as a follow-up from our discussion. Um, so a couple of last things. I'm sorry, this is longer than typically I am up here. Um, this is my final uh Neighborhood Board. It's been a pleasure and an honor. Um. I wish I could have done more for you all in my time, but I appreciate the time that I have with you all. And more importantly, how welcoming you've been. So, thank you. Um, let's not get next to the next part. Um, with me is uh Major Tony Hubner. Um, he actually work, worked a few doors down from each other's ZMO office. He's our our brigade executive officer. So you're actually getting somebody a lot smarter, a lot brighter, a lot funnier than I am. Uh, so keep that in mind, he is, he's actually one of the more very intelligent individuals within our organization and very professional. So um please extend the same type of uh um uh welcome that you had for me to him uh as he uh helps me transition out of the Army. And uh again, thank you very much. Yes, doubly. Doubly. Yes. Yes. So thank you very much. So, uh, Colonel. I'm sorry, any questions?
Any questions for the military this evening?
Okay, yes, ma'am.
That better be your last task before you.
That nuts off.
Um, so it's not in our district, but it's because it's a military. So right outside of Wheeler Army Airfield where Camp Stover is. So right outside the fence line, because I know there's some areas that you folks are your property.
Yep.
Who owns that embankment on the outside of Camp Stover fence line?
Teresa, I don't know the answer.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll get with you right after this.
Yeah, I'll show you some photos.
And show me on the map and then I can get your right RFI.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yeah, go ahead. Dan, first of all, I thank you. Um, this is regarding the Milani uh Malka wildfires and for the use of the 25th Division assets. Um, again, it was really a joint effort uh that that we saw, but do you know offhand, who was the incident commander leading it?
I I do not know. Um, but while I will convey back to the Garrison and to Ushahaw Commander that uh you're interested in in uh thank you for uh for your resp, or for your gratitude and and if they want to reach out, the election.
One more question, I'm sorry, because you said that my, I would be remiss if I didn't ask this for my children. They were curious, where were you folks getting your water to fill your buckets?
That's a great question. Because I was right up the hill and I was asking the same question.
They would wash in there, isn't going into Lake Wilson? Do they have a well? I was like, I will ask at the next.
So I I don't know specifically, but what I could tell you is when when uh when I was driving and I was watching through their operations, I know they were loading up at Wheeler. I just don't know if they were actually loading the water at Wheeler. Um, I know there was uh at one point of coordination with HPD as they were loading over here by the field. Roger. So specifically where they were drawing the water from, I don't know the answer. Yeah.
At Malka, they saw the the pool.
Yeah.
And so I thought, maybe they have a pool there. But then my son, because he was still Hawaiian school, he's like, maybe there's water we don't know about there.
No, no, we're not hoarding water.
I'm like, no, I don't think there's a well.
No, no, no. Uh, I I don't know. I I know that it was done in coordination with all appropriate authorities so that way we did it the right way. There was nobody trying to skip system. Any other?
Hey, any other questions? Well, Colonel, thank you for your service to this board and to the brigade. We really appreciate it. Um, you retiring?
Yes, sir.
You still live here or?
I will be here for, well, I will start my transition leave in March. Um, so I will be remaining on the island until one July of next year.
Oh, okay.
So, so yeah, my my wife actually wanted me to bring up some things tonight, but I told her, I'm gone, so. I can show up in 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 civilian clothing, so.
Alright, thank you, Colonel, and have a happy holiday.
Yeah, and same to you all and Happy New Year. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Colonel. Okay, moving on to board business. We, the board has a one-board vacancy at large to fill. Is there anybody interested in filling the vacancy? Now, come on up, please, if you can introduce yourself and um thanks being a little bit about your background and why you're interested in being on the board.
My name is Anna Misako Hudson and I'm resident from Milani. I'm retired. Sixty and thirty-one year service in the public service, working with municipalities, finding local services in the country. Supervising sole management. I do work. My last job is the assuming. So my background is really strong in local government. And I always thought that if I retired, it's a mission in this space of boards and with the opportunity to serve the community and trying to do more things in the community. I'm just having a lot of fun. I've worked even with a group called Better Government Week and the Good People's Day thing. And I know they've been doing some good things in the world. It's interesting and just thinking to just keep the feeling in the same way that I always like. But um yes, so if there's any questions.
Any questions from the board member? Use the microphone, please.
How long have you been in uh Milani Malka or Milani?
We own, uh, oh, we bought a home in 2015, so five years of evidence. And um, yeah, I was hoping to do more important things in areas that I guess. It's dangerous.
Any other question, board members? Stanton? Stanton's online. Stanton's online. Okay, Mr. Well, thank you very much. Board members, uh, please use Ford. Filling the position, if they're nominating second.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Did Stanton, did you say Stanton nominated or not?
No, no, we need to nominate.
I'm willing to nominate.
We've been seconded. Okay, we have to do a roll call, hold on a second. Yeah. Yeah. Nominate, you have to say your name.
Uh, Anna Miyako Misako Hudson.
Okay.
Alrighty, when I state your name and when I call your name, please state the name of the person you're voting for. Uh, Kuehu.
Anna Hudson.
Melendra. Miyamoto. Oishi.
Uh, Anna Hudson.
Rogers. Tomashiro.
Yes, for Anna Hudson.
Hazama.
Anna Hudson.
And Agadir. Alright, we have enough votes. Congratulations. Um, I can swear you in on the side and then you can join the board up front here.
Okay, turn recess.
Under uh, yes, I know. And they care. No, up here.
Oh, I'm reading the page.
I know. Yeah, but it gives the full names, all the names without your attending.
We're gonna have while we have.
We're going to ask why we have, we. Yeah, thanks. Oh.
Look at the dog.
Oh. Ah, well done, Bill. Well done. You have a serving for me. Well done. Wendy, for you. There was a, uh. Why would I be going?
Okay. Appreciate the patience. Uh, call the meeting back into order. Congratulations to, to Anna for, uh, being our newest member on the board. The pay and the benefits package is incredible. So, uh, for item B, our next item, uh, you contacted me this afternoon, so we are going to defer that item for our January sixteenth meeting and move on to item C, which is, uh, opening up a discussion once again for a secondary emergency access road out of Milani Maoka. I know that this issue probably came up, I don't know, say, maybe a little less than ten years ago. So, one of the issues was that, um, in a lot of different communities, some of our communities, we, at Maoka only have one access road out and in, mostly out. So for emergency purposes, we were in discussions with both the DOT and the city to establish some kind of emergency access road out of Maoka, um, somewhere along the back edge of the district park, which is really the part of land that's closest to H2 going north. Um, I really remember whatever happened to those discussions, but, uh, you know, it's fire and all these other things have brought up this issue again about the importance of being able for our residents to get out as quickly as possible during an emergency. So I think we need to start up the discussions again, probably ask, um, both DOT and the county to, um, we can come back to the table with us and figure out how we can do that. Um, again, the emergency access road similar to what they had in Waina. So the gate and the road is closed for normal operational time. It's only open during an emergency situation where the first responders or authorities have the keys and will open it for the people during that emergency. Um, any question by the board? Go ahead.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Um, a couple of years ago, I was at a, uh, at the middle school over there, uh, and they were having a big discussion about this emergency access road thing. Uh, I don't remember who the department was, but I'm sure you could find that department out pretty quickly, um, and that might save some regressing on, because it was a very, a very heavy discussion. So that might possibly, um, be usable, I would say.
Okay. I'm pretty sure DOT, um, it'll need some kind of Eastman, um, from the county. And we're not, I don't think we're tied to any one specific location. It's just that it may have sent the closest access to H2 would be somewhere near the back end of the district park. Because further up, uh, the home part of Phase Three of that, but, uh, there might be a possibility of building something up there, up in the upper part of Phase Three as well. But Phase Three wasn't, wasn't built when we had those initial respect for them. So that might be another possibility.
Um, Chair.
Yep.
Uh, back in twenty thirteen, March of twenty thirteen, um, the discussion was on the table already with DOT. Um, I might want to, Senator Delacruz's office might have , uh, additional information. Back then, um, emergency access road from Milani Maoka, um, Senator inquired what DOT's plans were for the access, and they were informed that the Central Wahoo Transportation Study for twenty fourteen overall work program includes a secondary access from H2. So that might be some place to start, uh, if Senator's rep is on.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we can do that one day, uh, when we come up. Any other discussions, uh, by community or board members?
On that issue or another?
Just this issue, yeah.
On this issue?
Yes. All right. So we'll bring it up, um, Senator Cruz's office as well as.
Um, Mister Chair, before you start, I just had a, a short one. Um, we had that Albezia presentation last, uh, month, and you know, it's, it's how we don't pay attention to our surroundings very well. So I'm sitting in Aina Muthua and Mahi Ula Parkway, and I'm looking at the MTA, um, I don't know what you call it, the walkway that goes all the way up to the, uh, elementary school. Guess what's there? A whole bunch of Albezia. My point being, should we communicate with the MTA about that, or should we stick the Albezia presentation coupon?
Good point.
Sorry, Chair, I didn't realize we were doing resident and community concern.
Oh, we didn't go there yet, but we will. All right. Since there are no other discussions, we'll bring that up, and I just wanted to bring it up for discussion against the, uh, because I, I know there are a lot of people due to the fire that brought it up. Again, a lot of people didn't know that we were, this was an issue before. So we'll bring it up and hopefully we'll figure out something. Okay, so now we'll move on to residents' concerns.
Um, the Milani Maoka parking ride lights are again not on. I drove through, that's why I was a little earlier than normal. Um, it was pitch black at seven, oh, six fifty-five PM. It's pitch black. It's pitch black in the morning at six o'clock. It might be pitch black before six o'clock. I don't get there till about six. Um, I can't see my feet. I got out of the car, couldn't see my feet in the middle of the parking lot, which is extremely dangerous. So if we can figure out what's going on, I don't know which department's going to handle it, city or council member, but those lights, they need to really make an effort to adjust the timers effectively so that no one gets hurt. And when the kids go in the mornings or whoever's using the parking ride, they will have light. There's absolutely no light. The lights from the street don't even glare, uh, reach the parking lot.
Okay, we have that down. Any other community concerns, residents' community concerns? Yeah, come on up, please.
Aloha. I would just like to introduce myself. My name is Ken Inoue. I'm, uh, running for the District Thirty-seven, uh, State House C. Um, I am here tonight to listen and get some additional clarity on issues that are confronting our citizens here. And I will be here. Um, I'm going to try to be coming to, coming to these meetings about every other month or so, just so I can add to what I hear on the street from talking to, to folks. Um, feel free to reach out to me. Our, our website is going to be going live in a few weeks. And, um, in the meantime, uh, thank you very much for your aloha.
Thank you. Any other residents or community concerns this evening? Okay, go ahead. Online.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, aloha, Tara Rojas. Just wanted to testify and just give some, uh, my thoughts, my input about the fires that happened, you know, recently that lasted a long time. I just, uh, got onto the meeting right now in Kalamai. So do you have any more information of how it started? One. The second one is, I just want to put it there for the record, just to make sure that it wasn't part of, you know, some other plan and that, you know, no type of building ever occurs there because of the fire, you know? And so I just, again, wanted to put it there. And, uh, and then three, what have you all, if any, decided on as far as future, uh, situations like this? So again, the origins, no building in the area, and also solutions for future fires. Because we could smell it all the way over here, you know, in Ever Beach. Mahalo.
Okay, so to answer your first question, um, the Honolulu Fire Department was on earlier in the meeting. They, there is an investigation underway for the cause of the fire. Um, the investigation is still ongoing, so I think when the results come out, they will make that information public. Second question is, uh, there are no buildings or structures, uh, that were endangered by the fire in a very remote, uh, forest reserve area. There are no buildings around or anywhere close to that. And the third question was, oh, solution for future fires. Well, that's a tough one. Um, I've been telling people that this particular area of the fire was very interesting in the fact that this particular area was not dry bush. It was really lush, green area, which normally fires don't like to start and they're not very successful in surviving very long. Um, but I think maybe this might be a lesson. Alice, all your Albezia trees burn first, but, um, normally, normally when you have these brush, wild brush fires or whatever, they're dry bush, a lot of dry vegetation. But in this particular area, you know, one is a very, very remote area. So, you know, even the fire department, the first responders couldn't even get anywhere near it. Why, they have to use air, aircraft and helicopter to put it out. Uh, but, you know, there's no dry bush in that sort of, uh, we will continue to work, I think, with the fire department as well as state and county officials to figure out, um, how to prevent these things from happening again. I, I think the most important thing for us is that, one, there are no home structures that were threatened by this fire. And I tell people the great job that, uh, first responders, the fire department, the military did in containing this fire the best they could. I think they did a great, uh, yep, thank you.
And I just wanted to clarify, my number two wasn't about structures nearby. I'm just putting on the record because you know about smart cities, that, that no building will occur on that land. I know conservation and everything, but we, I follow long enough to see the kind of, uh, how that happens. Just so that no future building.
Okay.
Building will occur.
Yeah, sorry, I misunderstood. So part of the land actually is forested where it belongs to DLR. The other part, I believe, uh, private. Uh, so there are no plans to, um, build that area. Any questions?
Chair.
Okay.
If I can address that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Concern. Aloha. Um, just so you know, it's not a reachable area, meaning there's no road structures, which is why it was very difficult for HFD to get the fire out. There was no way for them to go in. So I am your equal watchdog here. So I would be one of the first ones to know if they were planning something, because I watch for that, especially in our area of the island. So I appreciate you coming and sharing that from your area and making it your kuliana. And I hear where you're coming from. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Any other residents concerned this evening? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our elected official report. Officer Governor Dean.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I don't have a really long update. I did have the governor's newsletter, which you guys have, people got, you can find it on his website. Uh, one thing I did want to highlight is the successful down buyback program that the Department of Law Enforcement and Department of Public Safety put on. It was a massive success, so much so that they ended up extending the time two more hours to go down the highway to H1, all the way from the capital. So, uh, they'll probably plan it out a little better next time. This was the first one. They collected almost five hundred firearms. This was mostly from Papua New Guinea in the neighborhoods both out Waina side and also downtown. We just said they didn't want to leave weapons behind. Their case to have to figure out what to do. Uh, a lot of this story that we heard were because they, that they just wanted to do something about them now. They can't be used anymore. Um, and so they responded in a way that's been really safety, uh, supported them. And then that was the, the fat one. And I had a note for Trifa about the water drops. So you can tell your kid that some of the water comes from my, I have a fresh company facility. Yeah.
Any questions for the governor's offices this evening? No, I'm fine. Okay, thank you, Tony. Okay, moving on. Do we have anybody from Congressman Chase's office on this evening? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Officer Mayor, uh, Blandiardi. Carrie?
Good evening, Chair. Um, good evening, board members. Carrie Cassa, Deputy Director, Budget of School Services, uh, reporting on behalf of Mayor Blandiardi. Um, so the mayor's newsletter is, um, now out and available on oneohahu.org. A couple of, uh, items to share from the newsletter this evening. Um, not sure if any, if you're aware, that a new, uh, Kapolee Convenience Refuge Center is now open at nine one one eight four Ka'omi Lu. It's the tenth waste disposal center, um, on the island that is now, uh, available for residents to dispose of waste and rubbish. Um, um, additional item is that the mayor's office of the culture and arts was recently awarded one million dollars in funding for public art. Um, we are one of eight cities to secure this grant by the Bloomberg Philanthropies Public Arts Challenge. There are one hundred fifty cities that apply. And so, uh, again, uh, sitting colony of Honolulu is very honored and proud to receive this one million dollar grant. Uh, the project that this will be used for is known as Wahipana Project, or in other words, it's, uh, named, it's storied places. So, uh, this will be a multi-million dollar art installation, uh, to connect tourist destinations with the, the stories behind those particular destinations. Um, lastly, I wanted to mention that the Mililani Holiday Parade, uh, is going to, um, take place on December second at nine AM, starting at Mililani High School and going all the way to the town center. And that is, on that same night, uh, Honolulu City Lights, uh, will also, uh, be held at, uh, Honolulu Hare. So lots of, um, lots of holiday activities coming up. Uh, the tree topping ceremony takes place, uh, starting next week, um, Friday, December first. So, um, with that, I, I want to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving and happy holidays.
Okay. Any questions for the mayor's office this evening? Hi, Carrie, this is Dean. So, um, one thing, do you have any further status on what they're going to do with that sign in Makai Kai and Mahi Ula Parkway?
Oh, is that, I didn't realize that's still an open item. It's, it wasn't on my list, but I'll be sure to follow up.
Yeah, I think you said they're going to try and do something, but that sign's still there. So, I mean, which is fine, but I haven't, they haven't really done any of that from that.
Okay. Um, sorry about that. Uh, follow up?
And the second thing is, I know we've been trying to work with council members' offices too, but, um, and then thanks to Alice, we found out that there's some contractors of, from DDC that are actually doing some coring work, uh, for the repaving project. Uh, for the repaving project, but. I, I think we've been kinda waiting patiently for what the start date or when DDC anticipates starting work up here for repaving. Rehabilitative work of the streets and we, we haven't really gotten a, a good answer from them as far as the timeframe. So maybe you could, yeah, if you could follow up with them and find out, uh, like I said, we found out through Alice, they gotta. Apparently they have a contractor up here doing some initial soil sampling of the roads. They're doing some coring work. But.
Okay.
We've been waiting for a while to figure out when they're gonna start, so.
All right, uh, sorry, yeah, happy to follow up on that, uh, Chair. Um, I apologize, it wasn't uh. You know, part of my list of outstanding items, but I will get on it.
Yeah, no, no problem. Okay, any other questions?
Chair, can I?
Teresa, go ahead.
Yeah, so talking about streets, so we call Street in Launani Valley, it runs from the top all the way to the bottom. So Border Water Supply is doing their 12-inch water main or 12-inch pipe replacement project. Is it possible, cause now we're getting big potholes and I'm gonna, I send those into the pothole hotline, but is, can we see if we call Street is slated for? Um, repaving after Border Water Supplies project?
Uh, I will, I will ask and follow up on that one. It's, we call Street, right?
Correct, W I K A O Street.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the mayor's office this evening? Hey Carrie, have a happy, safe holiday season. Thank you very much.
Yeah, same, same to you, same to everyone. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Okay, move on to Council District 8, Council Member Okumoto.
Hello, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. Congratulations to the newest member, um, Hudson. And members in the community, both here in person and online, Council Member Val Lakina Okumoto. Like Chair, um, Famasen from District 8. So all of you should have received my written report. Um, I will stand on that and I'll just give a few. Um, just a couple of bills that I wanted, I think I mentioned in the past, but give you an update on it. We just did have, we, we just held our committee hearings week, last week, and our full council is coming up on December 2nd. Those bills will be moving through our council. So one noteworthy bill that we are still working through in the council is Bill 48. Bill 48 seeks to establish an assessment. Um, cap at no more than 2% annually for homeowners aged 65 and older. That means if your home value increases more than 2% with the market, your taxes are limited. The cap debt or cap debt 2% and provides tax relief and stability for our most vulnerable population. And one other bill that I wanted to mention, not necessarily an issue that we deal with. Um, a lot in Mililani, especially in Malca area, but our office does, has received some phone calls about certain monster homes. So there's a Bill 52 that's an important proposal for the council. We are looking to maintain neighborhood harmony by enhancing penalties for monster homes. The provisions include imposing fines with an initial violation and citing penalties up to $25,000 and subsequent daily fines of $10,000 per violation. This bill is intended to deter um construction. Again, not a issue that's per se in Mililani Malca, but we have had calls for other parts of Mililani regarding that concern. And um, I wanna thank the discussion that from Honolulu Fire Department, as well as those who came on prior to me about the fire. That was something that, you know, kind of um. Took over our lives for about seven to nine days. And I was, you know. Because I needed here, I was on the phone regularly with um Chief Ha'ol. So I was grateful for the information that um he was able to give to me. In that process, I had asked Chief Ha'ol if after the fire. If the, um, if the department would be willing to provide uh information through an information briefing. So last week, as I mentioned, was committee hearing week, and I did have the Honolulu Fire Department, Chief Ha'ol sent some of his battalion chiefs to come and discuss the fire. We had a really lengthy discussion on the strategies that they used, um, the decisions that they made, the resources that they had, uh, the partners that we had. Really grateful for the Army and National Guard and all who had participated because we are limited in our, our um capacity, our capabilities with the helicopters that we have. Like Chair Hazama mentioned, this fire really was not in anywhere near the residence, but the smoke did um kind of fill the air for some time. So it was good to hear. We had questions about um air quality and the, the department had answered a lot of those questions. I, I do have the link posted to that hearing on my social media, on my next newsletter, I will have the link in there because I really wanted it on record. We had a, if you can imagine, a lot of phone calls and emails and I got text messages with questions and concerns about what the department was doing. So I wanted the department, I, I would get work from Chief Ha'ol, but I know that not everybody had, was pretty to that unless they had watched the press releases, but it was, it's really good. I, I, I would encourage everybody to watch it after about, about the halfway mark, there's a lengthy discussion on the, what the department did and what their resources. Um, are and what they're looking forward to, and I think it's really good as we move into budget season, which is coming up for the council. At the beginning of next year, to know what we can do to support um the department. After the Lahaina fires, I know everybody's um senses and awareness is more alerted, and so we wanna make sure that the community feels safe. I, I felt really good about after hearing how the department had handled everything, working with our partners, I, I felt really safe and I'm proud for what our local. Um, fire department was able to do, and I learned a lot just through the info briefing that I think. We are one of only 20 maybe in the nation counties who actually have our own air program. And that's not something that the other counties in our state actually do. So um, they didn't mention it, but one thing that was discussed in the, in the info briefing was that um, there's gonna be. That they're in the process of procuring a new helicopter because the three that they have right now are getting outdated and they're limited. We had a hundred gallon bucket versus the Chinook, which I think was 2,000, the Army, the Black Hawks had much greater capacity, so. We're in the process of that, but I think the department is hoping, especially with the, the wildfires and the incidents happening, that we can find funding. To get another one with the older um helicopters soon gonna be outdated. I think they were purchased in the nineties. So that's in here and I, I, like I said, it's on my social media, you can find it on the council website, but in my next newsletter, I will be putting the direct link. So that you can go and if anybody has questions, I know you guys are knowledgeable also, but just the general public could turn to it. That was the purpose of me wanting to have that hearing. And other than that, if not, I'll take questions.
Thank you. Any question?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
On that issue that I, I brought up with you, um, uh, Council Member uh Okamoto, Jamie Detwiler had uh gotten ahold of you. Unfortunately, I did not make a copy of the real answer that you gave. And uh, I know that Chair Dean and I were talking about it and I couldn't answer his question. That's that, that one with the three or four inch holes in the.
Correct.
Yeah, the um, uh, Hokua GeoTech. And it's a contract with the uh, with the uh city to test soil. Can you, can you?
That was the information that, that's the information that we received from the mayor's office, so, and so if you want us to dig further into it, I can definitely have my, my office could dig further. But when, when Jamie sent the email, we did send it out and get that's the information that we were given. But if you need further information, I, I can go and see what um further, I, I think it sounds like Chair wants to know the timeline and that's something that's. That we could probably ask for.
Typically, the GeoTech companies will go in to do their coring before the project.
Mm-hmm.
I'm hoping that they're getting folks to figure out a date when they can actually start the work.
Yeah, Jamie, I think email said that the roads had been recently paved, but the pictures she sent to my office, they look like they haven't been paid, that they, there's, they're in need of being paid.
Yeah, so a long time ago, what happened was the city, DDC came out with this thing called uh. I forgot what it is, but it was a coating thing that they put on the streets. That was supposed to extend the life for five years or so. So those, a lot of our streets on the top part were not even repaved, like, you know, the full paving process, so I think that's why they're due for that now.
Okay, I took that also, I know you had asked mayor's representative.
Slurry coat, that's what they called it. They called it like slurry coating.
Slurry coating?
Yeah, so there was a company that had this technology that would, like I say, extend the life of the road. For a few more years, so they wouldn't have to go through the whole, like digging out and full repaving process.
So.
A lot of our streets on the, especially on the top side, went through that process, which means that they're about due for.
More.
Full paving.
Okay.
But I think that's where the coring guys are coming through, because when they do that, they're gonna dig up all the. All the streets and we gotta do the de-ruiding of them and all of that.
Right. I know there was another group that was here along, in the same area, but they were digging up for the, the big roots that were, they were trying to fix that, but I think.
We just wanna kinda give our residents a rough timeframe so they.
That helps. I remember the one maybe about six years ago that was a council site, that was, that was a lot of headache with the. So I, I appreciate you, um, I think the more we can get the information out to the community, at least they can be informed. I did take notes, so we'll follow up with mayor's office as well. I'm glad that you were able to ask Carrie that question.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so you had shared about looking at options like, you know, getting them updated helicopters and things like that and getting that into budget. I'm just curious, if they get larger buckets, what's the water source then? Like you can have the toy, but not have the batteries, you know, like. Cause they were literally building up from a, a pool that they put up and then ran the water from the hydrants.
Mm-hmm.
That was. And I'm, I'm sure HFD could.
Yeah.
Set out, but I'm just curious, I mean, we, a lot, having the, the Army and the military, you know, bring their stuff out, that really helps to make a difference and if we maintain those relationships. And maybe we don't have to buy this big thing that we can have and it's a nice toy, but then we don't have the resource.
Right. I believe in, and I, I have the, the PowerPoints, the slide, the presentation notes that they gave me, I believe that they're. With the helicopter, they're looking for a tender and another, you know, fuel tank, so other things to, to help with the helicopter. They know that. What they have now is for the helicopters that we are in operation, but. I, I, I can, I can see the pictures in the slideshow, but if you watch, if you go back and watch that hearing, um, you'll see it in there. That's their goal. I think they're, they have plans for the current one that's under, you know, but looking forward, and I, I asked the question, these helicopters that we're having, that we're using now are gonna, they're, they're gonna be obsolete, yeah.
That is my, but I'm seeing 2,000 gallon bucket, where is that 2,000 gallons?
Where, I believe the, so the helicopter that is a twin engine and I think it's gonna go up to. It wasn't, it's not anywhere near what the Army has. I thought it was like 2 to 600, I have to again look at my notes. It's, it's larger than the one that we have, but the helicopter is gonna be used for rescues as well, and that was something that I think. Many residents didn't realize, I went to go visit the site one day and while they're out there, they actually have to still go to rescue, so while they were. Um, you know, dealing with the fire, and I don't wanna speak on their behalf, I'm just, I was really, um, I thought it was really important for them to come and share, so they're the experts and that's. That's, those are the information pieces that they shared with us.
It was neat to see them training at court the week before the fire, like they were training how to get the buckets up and all of that, and then. What great training right before an actual fire they had.
Yeah, I, I think in the hearing I learned that there were, one of the pilots actually, he, he's on training, but yeah, he, he was using that as an experience, sorry. Chair, thank you for um, for my time. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, if I don't see you before. Okay, sure.
Go ahead, Stanton.
Oh, um, Teresa, for the filling, I know that they filled on uh Area X in Schofield. But they also used a upper Halemano reservoir. For the um, for those 2,000 gallon ones.
For the Army.
And, oh Dean, there was a slur, slurry seal.
Yeah.
Was the product.
Slurry seal?
Yeah. Slurry seal.
Slurry something.
Thank you, Stanton.
Okay, Tara, go ahead.
Aloha, Tara Rojas. You know, I will be looking into the information that you provided, that informational briefing, uh, that's good to know. And I like the, the same mindset thinking about when you mentioned helicopters. You know, I am just gonna put it out there because I've been in, you know, many different meetings. Today was a Commission on Water Resource Management because the question was just asked, where is the water to put out the fire is gonna be coming from? And the fact that uh budget for new helicopters, I do just wanna put it out there, you know, regardless of what your uh people's opinion is maybe, but. It's a fact that in 2029, the DOD sets are up on, in Hawaii. Which includes, you know, the Army, Navy, uh, Air Force Marine, and what came to me to find is that repurposing, so you know, people using helicopters. And uh, for you. On top of that, by any chance, do you know what the cause of the origin of the fire that happened, I think in the Halemano or Whitmore, you know, area? Know what the cause of that was?
The Halemano area?
This was when. I think by.
Oh.
Wahehwa, Kukani Loko area.
Oh, yes. I, I, I don't, and I, I, I don't want to speak on behalf of um the, the fire department, I, I know that from the reports I heard. There were two evacuees that were um living in that area, but other than that, I don't know where that started. I know that they were able to put that one out with. With people on the, on ground and.
Chair. If I can clarify, it's not her district?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe we can ask that question to the next, uh, the next office, Council District 2.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
So Council District 2, Council Member Wire, Kelly, you're online? Yeah, go ahead. There you go. Yeah, you gotta kinda raise the volume a little bit if you can. Okay.
Okay, how about now?
Yeah, that's good.
Can you hear me now? Okay, great. Um, thank you Chair Hazama and members of the board, Kelly Anaya from Council Member Matt Wire's office. Um, just had a couple of things to update. Um, Council Members Bill 47, um, which introduces or which allows the manufactured compostable materials. To be placed with debris bins has passed, and I believe the mayor did sign it yesterday, so definitely excited about that. And then, um, he also wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow is the deadline for the grants and aid. Um, application to be submitted, um, you can go to Honolulu dot gov and Department of Public Service for more information. Uh, and that's it for tonight. Do you have any questions for Councilmember? I can be helpful.
So, Kelly, I don't know if you heard the last question from the person.
I heard something about Halemano.
Yeah, there's a fire, a small fire up there, I guess they wanted to know more information about it.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I, I don't have any, is it going on right now? Or is that the one from a couple Sundays ago?
No, no, it happened, it happened before.
Oh, the cup, the one from a couple, a couple Sundays ago?
Yeah, I think so.
I think it was, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I, that's all I know, I, I don't have.
So maybe you can go back and, and check and then get back, that's been the next one.
Sure, was there a specific question as about the fire?
How did it start?
Oh, okay.
Chair, can I just clarify where it is?
And is that from Tara?
Go ahead.
Is that Tara that was asking? Okay.
Kelly, that's the one that was behind and around Kukani Loko. That was off from uh Schofield had to evacuate on one side, I don't know if Lieutenant Colonel knows anything of what started, but it's the one that was. On that side. It wasn't on the Halemano side. It was Whitmore, right across from Whitmore by that light behind in that area.
Okay, so that was more than a couple Sundays.
Yeah, it's farther back, uh, maybe about a month and a half.
A month or so, okay.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay, no problem.
Okay, any other question? Hey Kelly, thank you.
Thank you, happy Thanksgiving.
You, happy holidays. Okay, Senator Dela Cruz's office, anybody on?
Hello, Chair.
Hi.
Hi, um, I'm for Senator Dela Cruz's office. Um, before I begin my three-minute report, I'd just like to introduce myself to you as I. Uh, this is my first time attending the Malca Neighborhood Board. My name is Alexander Ozawa. Um, I am a budget analyst for the Senate Committee on Ways and Means, of which Senator Dela Cruz is the chair. Um, I graduated high school, uh, Mililani, class of 2022, and um, so I heard. And I'm also incidentally a member of the Mililani Town Neighborhood. Um, so I heard the question earlier about the access road, the Senator Access Road into and exiting Malca. So I've written down the details. I'm gonna make sure we check our reports so I can get back to uh the January meeting. Onto my report, um, we're getting close to the 2024 Legislative Session, it's gonna open Wednesday, January 17th. Um, Ways and Means is ramping up, um, as the, as the budget, formal budget process is starting to begin. We're gonna be looking closely, of course, for anything related to fire suppression readiness, uh, so. You know, we saw recently that even traditionally wet and rainy areas could. could succumb to large wildfires, so we want to make sure that we're on that and that we're prepared. Milani High School, Phase Two improvements are going to be continuing in the next couple of months for the softball field. And lastly, Senator De La Cruz has a newsletter. We're sending out a lot of good stuff recently, so I suggest you subscribe by emailing delecruzz2@capital.hawaii.gov. And I'm open to any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Senator De La Cruz's office this evening? In the audience, online? Okay, nice meeting you. Thank you very much. District Thirty-Eight, Representative Matsumoto.
Hi Lauren.
Good evening Chair, members of the committee. Nice to see you in person. It has been a whirlwind last few months. I have been traveling to a lot of conferences. Like I think I've mentioned before, I've been, have had the honor to be the National Chair of Women in Government. And we just had our most recent conference covering economic diversity, healthcare, education, and a lot of great topics to be bringing back to Hawaii. And I just returned last, nope, the night before from the Rodel Fellowship. It's a wonderful organization. They have picked twelve Democrats and twelve Republicans from across the country with the idea of working on not policy but on leadership and how to move things forward despite differences. And so a wonderful conference. They keep that same cohort together for three times over the course of two years. And so really a wonderful thing. And they're actually looking to do that work in the states, in individual states, and Hawaii is one of them that they're looking to do to see how to move things forward. And that's between executive, city, city level, state level, and across all the islands. So something exciting and potential on the horizon for Hawaii. In my report, you'll also see there's just some community updates, dementia awareness, Operation Holiday Joy. And again, as we've talked about earlier, the wildfire. But I do want to bring your attention to the most important part of my handout. It's actually on the last page, is our twenty twenty-four pre-session survey. That is going to be going live on Monday. So if you go to repmatsumoto.com, you can fill it out online. Or if you live in District Thirty-Eight, you will be getting it in the mail. So be on the lookout for that. I know with the holidays, it might take a little while. So over the next week, look out in your mailbox. And the reason this is so important is this survey is really how I build my legislative bill package for the twenty twenty-four session. And so all of your input is really important. And last but not least, please sign up for my e-newsletter, also at repmatsumoto.com. It's how we keep you updated. We send it every other week to try not to fully inundate your, your email box. And that is my report for today.
Thank you. Any question for Representative Matsumoto? Oh, Tara, go ahead.
Aloha, Tara Rojas. I have a question. You're talking about that cohort and you said moving things forward on the city, right, the county, state level. What were you talking about? Were you talking about just, I guess, bills or legislation? That's my first question. And second, is this cohort that's over two years, are you a part of it? And then will you be giving out periodic updates from this cohort on how that is going? Or will it be like at the end of two years? So those two questions. Mahalo.
Yes. And so this is, what I am a part of is a national cohort. So we have like a council member from Florida, a lieutenant governor from Oklahoma, the mayor of Kansas City. So this is across the country, but they're looking to do the same model in states because they recognize that there has to be more collaboration across the executive, you know, the state level and as well as the county level. So it's not in Hawaii yet. It is a national organization. And so hoping to have it come here to Hawaii sometime soon.
Okay, and will you be giving periodic updates going through it and also will there be community input embedded into this, this process of moving things forward?
I can give updates as it comes, if they're looking, as they're looking to do it for Hawaii. I don't know if there's going to be community input because this is a independent, a private organization who puts on this fellowship. But I can put it in my next newsletter, more information about it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other question? Hey Lauren.
Thank you.
Happy holidays. Okay, we'll move on to District Forty-Six, Representative Perusso.
Aloha, Chair. This is Yvonne Yoro from the Office of Representative Perusso. Aloha, everyone, board members and community members. Rep, first wanted to start off by saying that Rep really was his, she could be here today. However, she has to miss because she is visiting her family on the east coast, east coast. So she'll be back for the January meeting. A few updates from our office. So Representative Perusso continues to work on the Hazard Awareness and Response Team. And she mentioned this before when she was talking about the HARP disaster preparedness teams a few months ago. So if you fall in her district, she'll be doing some private thing events in Lovanani Valley looking for community leaders, our neighborhood captains, who could be a part of that neighborhood network. Next day, next item, she's, the house working groups that she's involved with. So she was involved into the wildfire prevention working group as well as the environmental remediation working group. Both, actually, in fact, all of the working groups have just held their public hearings. But they are still accepting more recommendations of the public, additional comments. So if you hadn't had a chance to join any of those public hearings, the recordings are online on YouTube and they're also linked to the Capitol website. For the wildfire prevention working group, the recommendations will extend to address land management as well as food production. And then for the environmental remediation, some of the recommendations, although specifically Maui, will also have statewide implications or statewide impacts. And then lastly, I wanted to talk about the Kiki Takish High School internship program. So the application is still open. And we're accepting applications until December first. So if you know any high school students who are interested in working with legislative office for the twenty twenty-four session, please have them reach out to our office. They can either email or call us at any time. Mahalo.
Thank you. Any questions for Representative Perusso top this evening? Online.
Sorry, Chair. Do you know the date and time for the Wahe'ua Christmas parade? Ooh. It's what time?
Have that in our calendar. If you give me one second. I'm so sorry, Teresa. I don't actually know what time that is, but I can follow up with you after this evening.
No, it's okay. I wanted the community to know. It's December first. I'm not sure the time it starts at Kaala Elementary. So usually it's right after, I think it's six thirty or so, just for our Lovanani Valley kiddos that will be marching in it. Six thirty, starting from Kaala up until Kane Street, I believe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Moving on to District Thirty-Seven, anybody on for Representative Chica this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Next item on the board is approval of the board minutes for our October seventeenth board meeting. Board members, any comments or revisions? Seeing none, any objections to adopting the minutes as stated? Any objections, any extensions? Seeing have been adopted for October seventeenth. Moving on to reports. Patsy Keemink, Central Oahu Regional Park.
No reply.
All right, moving on to committees. Education, the Melendys is not here this evening. Military Civil Attendants.
No report.
Parks and Recreation? Okay, Planning Committee and Zoning, Stanton?
No report.
Okay, I have enough for Transportation, Recognition and Service of Orange.
Mr. Chair. I believe I should acknowledge the fact that we have a TV star among our board here. And I'm speaking of our Vice Chair, Mr. Tomashiro. And he confronted the TV commentator, Bryce Moore, thank you. And he did a very credible job in front of the Maoka Fire Department and a very lucid and intelligent and strong discussion about the Milani Maoka Fire. And I really enjoyed seeing him on TV and I think we ought to commend him for being such a good TV star.
Now he's going to ask for a raise.
Yeah. And Mr. Chair, I'd like to have, I'd like to have in January a honorary whatever for our friend over there in the Army. The one that, the one that's he turning around looking to see who I'm talking about.
All right, we will do that. We will do that for, well deserved. Any other recommendations? Alex, you done? Okay. Anything else? Okay, any other announcements? Seeing none, again, this is a reminder, the Milani Maoka Lovanani Neighborhood Board will be in recess in December. Our next meeting will be held here Tuesday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four at seven PM. Again, everyone have a safe and happy holiday season. We'll see everybody after the new year. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.